Because being the county commissioner's order, we start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the minutes?
No, I do not have the minutes. I want to use the last two of those.
Huh?
I have them three, four, seven.
Okay, we'll, the minutes are not quite done. We'll just leave then till the next meeting and prove both set at the same time. We'll have our department head reports. Start with highway department.
Good morning.
Morning. We just finished up on chip seal on Thursday, so we're going back to the routine of fixing things and stuff like that. Moved out the building, the pole barn, got that all cleaned out and stuff. Yeah, we get into some bourbon next week, or towards the end of this week, try to get some more bourbon on the gravel roads. It's just been bad on the gravel roads. When it comes to maintaining them, it's like a fishbowl. So we'll try to knock all the bourbon down.
I see you was out sweeping off that excess.
Yeah, we, uh, we're sweeping now where we done some chip sealing and we got a mess out there in Furnaceville. We're out doing that this morning, cleaning that up. And, uh, yeah, we're gonna sweep all our chip seal roads, get all the loose gravel off of them. We've been doing that for the last couple of days. So it's gonna take us some time to get all the way around, but we're getting done.
Good. Okay. Everything going smooth?
Yeah, so far.
Okay.
Just need a building.
We're trying. We're trying, Richard.
All right.
Hey, you're keeping it for a while. You're keeping everybody out of that building, right?
Yeah, we taped it off and then we're gonna put a bolt through the, we've got a big arm that goes on the outside, outside the door from the shop. We're gonna bolt it shut so no one can get in there.
Super.
We don't need in there for anything, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Sado, you got anything for us?
Sure, I got a lot of stuff today.
Oh, you got the...
I got a couple of things today.
He jumped over.
That's okay. If you're up there, we'll sweep the lady up there.
Huh? I'm sorry.
That's okay. You play through, as they say in the golfing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun there. Um, I got with some carpet cleaning people, Harshill's and Johnson Carpet. To get some carpet clean done in the courthouse is a desperate need. The hallway upstairs, uh, it's a mess. So I had them bid me all the carpet in the hallway on the second floor. It's all the way around. And the tile down here and the auditor's office. That's the three works right now that I got bid for. Harshill's come in at $1,879. That's to do it all. That's the carpet upstairs, the carpet in the auditor's office, and the tile, all the tile down here.
What was it?
Uh, $1,879.
And that was, um...
That was Harshill's. Johnson's coming in at a whole lot more. Reason being, he don't have the equipment to do the tile. And he'd have to rent, he'd come in at $4,106. But he had to rent all the equipment. He didn't have the stuff to clean the tiles and stuff. And that's why he came in a lot more. But he was more on the carpet, even on the carpet. He was $906 on the carpet. Harshill's was, uh, $729 just on the carpet.
Well, they're also local to get onto drives.
Also Johnson.
So is Johnson.
Johnson has to.
I think somebody else.
I didn't get a chance to get the in-your-box. I just got a bag. So...
Those are the only two?
Yeah, those are the only two.
I would suggest we approve the Harshill two cleaning conference.
Some move?
Second.
Been moving second, we approve the quote from Harshill two.
And I'll, I'm gonna drive through this on Saturday, so I'll need to be here. So when that happens, I'll, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
The other thing I have...
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. We got a vote on that. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Jumped the gun again. The other thing I have is that compressor that's out at the annex, uh, takes care of the Veterans Office. And it also takes care of the front part of the, where they moved the juvenile over there. Takes care of that part of where it is. Cold Iron come in at $1,675.90. And Johnson's come in at $1,650. Has to replace, just replace the compressor.
$1,007.06.90?
$1,006.75.90.
$6.75.
And Johnson come in at $1,006.50.
Does that, does that have anything to do with that one room being so warm?
Yeah.
I was over there yesterday, so where the lobby is, where juvenile probation is now, it'll make that one room cooler, I guess?
Can we make it?
No, is that what, is that part of it?
Yeah, that controls that. Takes care of that, part of that bathroom, that hallway and bathroom and that waiting room area that they've got set up. Takes care of all that.
I don't know about that. Cause there's no employees. It's just a waiting area. $1,000 to make it comfortable.
Let's take care of part of your probation and the Veterans Office. You can't take care of part of it without doing it all.
Right. So the Veterans Office is the same way, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, uh, Mr. President, here Rick, most common will approve, uh, Cold Iron's quote.
Second.
Been moving second, we approve Cold Iron's quote. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
The only other thing I have is I got a phone call on the way over here, uh, on the cap on the jail roof from Shomel's. And he said that they're going to leave the limestone cap that's on there and go over it. And it's gonna save us a bunch of money. He didn't give me a figure, but he said it will save us money.
Well, what really happened to that cap?
They're original, I'm sorry.
What really happened to the cap?
Freezing thawed. It just busted and slid apart. So they're gonna, they're gonna put it back, I mean slide it back and then put the new cap over top of that. He said it would, it would fix the problem.
What kind of cap they talking about?
They're gonna put a vinyl cap over it. Or aluminum cap, I'm sorry.
Aluminum?
Yeah. And he said that would save us money. That'd keep them from having to tear that off. So that's gonna...
So this had to form that to fit the cap or something?
Yeah. Yeah. He said the company, he's already been in contact with the company. They said that that would be their recommendation to go over it like that. It will fix the problem. I mean, it's...
But we don't have a quote yet.
No. Well, we have a quote to fix it, but already approved. But it'll be, he said it would save us money. He hasn't, he didn't, he didn't give me a figure on how much it would save us.
Okay.
It will save us money.
Where are we paying them for? How much was that quote? It was pretty good size.
I looked, I thought I had it. I don't. It seemed like 28, 29.
Okay.
Somewhere around there.
I was just trying to...
I've got it in my office, but I thought I had it with me, but I don't. And like I said, he called me on the way over here, so I didn't have time to... But I'll get with him and see what the revised quote is and get it to you.
Okay.
So on.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Sado.
My turn.
Your turn.
I have here a contract for Bridge 25, uh, design over, uh, on County Route 300 North over Williams Creek. So... Two copies. I have places for you to sign. It's, uh, for a total amount of $243,100. And that includes all environmental impact studies. And it's a historic bridge. One last one.
What room lived in?
300 North.
Harrisburg Road.
West of Harrisburg.
It's that little, little bridge down in the dip there outside where...
Where you get 450.
Oh, okay. I know where you're talking about.
Yeah. Little narrow, narrow bridge there.
Who is that? Butler?
Butler, Furman, and Seifert, which we've been negotiating since, uh, end of May, more or less.
Okay, so we need to approve this contract, right?
Yeah.
Can you repeat that?
There's a date on the front page, I think, at the top. And it's where it got a mark for Seifert. Uh, it's a standard indot contract. And the indots looked at it and said, go ahead. But they're okay. It starts to... You said the indot approved the contract? Yeah. Sent it back to me with the notes saying it's okay to execute the contract. And I have to send them an executed copy. And then we can give a notice to proceed. We can start on design. Mr. President, I'll move to accept. Just a form, indot contract.
Are you, okay with the... I will move to accept.
Been moving second, we approve the contract with Butler Furman on the Bridge 25. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Anything else?
Okay, uh, last meeting that was brought up, concerns about a supposed alley in Falmouth.
Yes.
On the south side. I left a note in your boxes, if you got it, and one for the sheriff, that I looked up the addition, and it was laid out in 1838. And, uh, there's lots eight, nine, 10, 11, and east side of Lot 8, there's no alley showing on the plaque. As laid out by Stephen Isles.
So that solves that problem.
There's no alley to vacate. Maybe somebody's using it and knocking down the corner or something there. But, uh, we can't vacate anything. We don't have an alley there.
Right.
So I sent a copy to the sheriff. Hopefully that solves that.
And that, that woman that was in here concerned, you explained it to her?
I haven't talked to her. Uh, I haven't been contacted since the last, the day after the meeting.
Yeah, we have.
You have?
Well, I think we have her name, don't we? Shouldn't we?
We should probably...
Maybe we should contact her.
We should send her a notice, uh, what we would write, a letter to that effect, and we can send it to her.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, sounds good. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
IT director.
I don't have anything really to report new that I am needing approval for. Um, I've got, I'm working on the cameras, trying to get that project finished. I have, you know, if I can finish it myself with some help from John Poussey, I, I'll try to. But I'm, I'm going ahead with getting quotes from security companies. One of them being, user security, going meeting tomorrow to get quotes to finish out the project, just as a tying constraint, because we really need to get it done. It's been going, it's gone on long enough. Um, and right now, we've got 14 cameras that are working and recording throughout the courthouse, but we don't have anything on the exterior. So...
As I mentioned to you earlier, if you could get them quotes to us by our next meeting, because we want to get that camera thing done. If we don't have time to do it, we need to get, hire somebody to put it in and have that project completed. It's been going on too long.
We've been working on the Metronet phones. We think that we've got that problem straightened out to where it seems like we've localized it to individual phones that are a problem now, rather than the entire system. Um, so we think we've got that straightened out. That was pretty much all of my last week working on that, so...
I will, and this was, oh shoot, it was probably after four yesterday, but I was talking to the city and Julie was cutting out on me, so...
Okay. I'll see if I can mention that to the, to Metronet. And, you know, we, most of the problems we've found since they made, we finally got some changes done in the system, has mostly been on the outside world. You know, Verizon or whoever into Metronet. It's been on the other end. Um, but yeah, it's the first one I've heard since last week where it's been Metronet to Metronet. So I'll see what I can find out.
Michael, um, I asked Ben, and I'm sure transitioning to his new job, we forgot, but Debbie needs a phone down there at her station.
Here in the...
Yeah, right there where she is, right there.
Okay.
Could you arrange that, please? Thank you.
Yeah, that's the first I've heard of it, so...
We need to do an IT order through the help desk. Like, everybody... I'm joking.
And you're...
Maybe not.
You're coming here because you want something.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. I didn't think about it. I didn't say that out loud.
And I've, I've been telling all the offices, if there's something that you need, or you're wanting to know about, email me, call me. Um, because I know some of the offices, it's been, they, they happen to see me in the hall and they say, oh, we've had this problem for three weeks. Can you work on it? And it's like, well, if I don't know what the problem, I can't work on it. So let me know, let me know what kind of priority it is. And, you know, I'll, I'll add it to my board in the room and we'll start working on it. So...
Well, everybody's project is high priority, isn't it?
That's what I've been told. Everybody's office is more important than everybody else, you know? I should drop everything for their office. But, I mean, and if you're honest with the priorities, you know, if it's high priority or low priority, or it shuts you down. And I'm trying to get everybody to do that, so that we can treat everybody fairly, basically.
And you have, you have a log, do you not, or...
Yeah, Skylar's keeping a log of everything he does and we...
And the orders is coming in, and when they come in?
The white, we add everything to the whiteboard in there so that we can always know what we've got going on. So we're both on the same page.
Okay.
So... Anything else for me at the moment?
Uh, I don't think so.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mike.
Good job.
Any turn. Chris, what do you got first?
Um, nothing that, nothing that needs to be discussed right now.
Okay. Counsel representative, do we have one of those? No? Okay. Then we'll go on to the mail.
Oh, I do have one thing. Um, I, because it is, the contract won't be, um, awarded within three months of when we bid the highway garage, and it's having to be rebid, and the cost will be more than $300,000. Um, we have to, um, have another common construction wage hearing. So, um, Fayette County's falls on the fourth Monday of the month, so I got that set up for next Monday. So...
Go ahead.
Right, where we were before.
That one time?
9:00 AM.
Okay.
Are you gonna call Mr. Cold Iron? Or I can?
Okay.
Okay.
Be the same people?
Yeah, I'd have to call him and Jeff Reven.
Okay. All right. I have a letter here from Elizabeth Holmes stating that she's going to have to resign from the cemetery board. So we have, we need to be, um, trying to find somebody to take that position on that board. Uh, she gave me a couple of recommendations. I contacted both of those, and neither one of those could do it. So if anybody has any suggestions of somebody who would be willing to do that, we need to get that done. Is there any other mail?
No, I think that's, uh...
Was Pat Sue in one of those? Martin? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, she said that possibly another year she could do it, but she can't now. Old business. Copier contract, captive roads.
I'll take it out.
You're taking that?
And I want you to know, thank you for this, because Bill McDaniel, he was excited as Chris was getting his career. He came up there and he was one of the...
Bill McDaniel's list?
Glad we have phone cameras.
You've got the contract there before you to sign. Um, they are actually delivering the copier today, or the printer today, actually about an hour or so. Um, and they, they said they'd be fine to deliver it before the contract was signed, so...
You've already agreed to buy it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we, he, she had basically tentative approval from the council that they would approve an additional from the, um, sales disclosure fund. So, yeah.
So we go, we buy it, and we don't?
Yeah.
So we don't have to take any action?
Except to sign that contract. Because they decided to lea, well, I say buying it, they decided to lease instead of buying.
And it's got a certain, basically all, all, they'll take care of everything, the maintenance, paper, ink. All we're paying for is what we use. First word foot. So, just like most other copier contracts, so...
Okay. But I will sign this and we'll sign all this other stuff then. Okay. New business, declaring highway trucks surplus for auction. When, uh, before Jay left, we suggested that the two older single axle trucks that we, we sell them, we have, have no use for. Those are from what we had before we bought the five lane trucks, the tandem axles, we're gonna keep. The highway department hauls raw concrete and stuff that would damage our bid. So, uh, Coons is having a, they're sale this fall. We could put them in there, but we have to declare them surplus in order to sell. So we need to, if you agree with that.
Some move?
Second.
Been moving second, we declare the two older single axle trucks at the highway department as surplus and, uh, put them in Coons auction. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Jenna Turner, she's want something else.
Yep. That's right. What?
You reminded me to share. People is insulting. He's in the way. I need something.
I know. All that works for him is my idol. Don't tell him that about him.
Too late, too before you on TV.
I just have a couple requests this morning. We did successfully get the juvenile probation office moved over to the southwest corner of the annex on the first floor. Uh, in light of that, I've got a request for two security features that we need to add on there for security measures. The main one is to get a secure door. Uh, that would be the door from the waiting area back into the juvenile probation office. Um, part of that security and part of that, we've got a lot of confidential information in there, so we don't want it easily accessible. I do have three quotes for bids. CEI Innovative Security Solutions and Corson. The lowest bid is from CEI here in town. Uh, what I'd asked for was, uh, we're wanting actually a key fob to gain entry. Right now, on the adult side now, it's key code. And we regularly change the ID number in order to get access for security purposes. The key fob would be much easier, um, to take care of. And, uh, so I'm asking for that. I don't know if you want to talk about that first, before I move on to the next part.
What would it cost to put a key fob on the adult side? Did, that way you just...
I don't know. I can get a quote for that. I don't know.
Makes sense to get access the same way both ways.
True. And I would prefer that. I just don't know if it's configured that way originally. I don't know. It could be a quick fix. And if it is, I find that, because I like having the key fob rather than the code.
Would Agent, that there, I saw you look over here and say, with that agent and key fob, I don't know if they'd be able to easily switch that over. Okay.
What happens if somebody loses their key tech, key fob, that somebody else gets it?
I'll fire him. No. I would imagine that you can change that. Uh, we have up to 10. I think it was fobs that went with that. Um, I'm assuming you can change the, you know, it's a box of 10.
That's what they use it to do.
Yeah, I could be wrong. Most of those systems have individual key fobs.
No, because they, they destroy them. They're reissuing it. It'll just door for them. They have any problems with it.
What I'm saying is somebody loses it, then somebody else picks it up. What do you got?
Well, as long as it's well, they could, but they're gonna have to know, they're gonna have to know what the word actually goes to.
Or what?
Thanks, Frank. You seem to know more about than I do.
Control.
What else?
As far as the door, that's it. I'm, I'm requesting CEI as the lowest bid. Um, permission...
Could this money come out of your funds, or...
Yeah, actually, both of these things I'm asking for, we, I decide, and actually, this is if Debbie would agree that that's appropriate. We do have a technology upgrade fund. Typically, we're using that for laptop replacements, computer-like things, but we're not going to need any of those this year. We're pretty good to go. I consider that a technology upgrade. And so we've got $5,000 out of the Superior Collection of Probation User Fees. That's been budgeted and haven't used any out of that fund, so we have enough to cover from that fund. Wouldn't come out of County General. It would be out of our already appropriated budget for 2014.
You're talking about for the door and the glass?
Yeah.
I would almost say that... Find out what it's gonna cost to put one in the other one, too. I mean...
I don't have a problem with that. I can check.
It is, yeah.
Hope we can take care of what we got now.
And then if that seems feasible, I can come back with the request for the additional.
Brilliant.
Ready for motion, Mr. President?
Yes, we are.
I would move to accept for the door, uh, the bid from Communications Electronics Incorporated for $1,845.63.
Second.
Been moving second, we approve the quest, requests for the door, the glass. On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
The glass, the glass, accept, right.
Yeah. The next thing is the glass. Um, there is a sliding, I, I would assume in the health department was over there. There is a sliding, a small sliding glass door. However, it's glass. Um, I consider it a security concern. And someone could easily break through that. Um, also, it provides a bigger opening then where they can reach in from the outside. So we got, um, we ended up with two quotes in order to change that, actually to make the window actually a little larger, plexiglass, and then with a drop-in tray at the bottom. So paperwork can be passed back and forth without actually opening the window. Uh, it's exactly like what we have on the other side already with adult probation. Uh, there's a little voice box, I guess you would call it the middle for communication. We did try to get three quotes for that. Um, and we have been waiting on Bryant's Glass and Mirror out of Centerville. They came a couple of weeks ago. They did the measurements. Uh, my secretary actually said she's called at least five times, left voicemails as recent as yesterday, letting them know we had to have it by today. Um, she did mention originally when she called, they're apparently doing a lot of work up at the high school. So we're not sure why. We're not getting anything back from them. Um, you know, it's not as big of a need, I guess, as the door, but it is gonna be something really that we need to get taken care of. Um, the quote, uh, the only one locally that we got was Carnerville Mirror Works, which is also the lowest bid. And that's at $1,097.50. We do have one from Patrons Glass out of Richmond, um, which is $3,600. So it's quite a bit more. Um, I mean, if we have to get another quote, we're gonna have to go out of town somewhere else. Um, I don't know if we can get on the internet and research what's closer, but I don't know that you're gonna get anything cheaper than the local Carnerville Mirror Works, especially when you look at the difference between the Richmond company and Carner's Will. So if possible, I'd like to have that.
I would assume they made the effort to get the quotes. And the one outfit, I would assume they don't want the job, but they would have contacted you back.
Yeah. I mean, they came down and did the measurements and everything.
I'm satisfied you made the effort.
Right.
Okay.
Given that, Mr. President, I'll move to accept the quote for the glass, as mentioned, from Carnerville Mirror Works for $1,097.50.
Second.
Been moving second, we accept the Mirror Works bid for the glass. On my favor, say aye.
And, but just last things, kind of a report. I, um, had turned this into the council during my budget meetings and just thought that it would be good to share information of what is going over in the probation department. We do, uh, quarterly stats for the state, and it looks at the number of people we have on probation and various other things. So I thought it would be interesting, or you guys would find it... So I thought it would be interesting, or you guys would find it interesting just to see what's going over there. And it breaks it down. And I'm not gonna go over it in detail. You can look at it later. But basically from 2013 annual stats, we generally have a caseload on a daily basis over at probation of 647 people on probation, with 370 of those being felonies. There were 199 juvenile arrests or complaints that went through juvenile probation. So anytime a child's arrested or we get a complaint from the school, first step is for the juvenile officers to actually conduct an interview and then make a recommendation to the prosecutor of what should happen. Takes a lot of time to process that stuff. And then the 2014 collection of fees, that was up to, I think, I want to say July 30th, because it was prior to turning in the budget or going to the budget review hearing. We had collected $39,572 in probation user fees for the year so far. So we did have an Odyssey demonstration earlier this week. And so we've got a projected date of getting that started for the probation component the first week in December. We have to wait for the courthouse to be up and running before we can have our program part start, because a lot of our information is transferred from what's entered at the clerk's office and from the courthouse side. So we're working on that and we're excited to get that in. So I just thought I would try to share a little more information like, at least on a quarterly basis of what we're doing over there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Debbie, you want to talk to us about a post-lease meeting?
I do not have that information. So I had it there. Please, let's get my table.
So that's all to do this. I, I guess I should mention that the city and the county have a joint agreement on the EMS service with the city running it. And the city yesterday bought a new chassis for the ambulance we have and gonna put the box we have on it. With it, the reason they was able to do that, we have money coming back from, that was collected for us for Medicare Medicaid bills. We have a check for $80,000. They're gonna use that to pay for, pay for the new chassis. They still have about $50,000 they owe on the, on the old truck. But they have, we have money coming in for 2013. We don't know how much yet, but possibly we're gonna be able to get the new, the new ambulance with no additional tax dollars. If there is, it won't be much. So the new ambulance, what they're gonna do is put the, put the box we have now, which is good, on a brand new, on a brand new chassis. And that should be delivered toward the first of the year. We have any patients' concerns? If not, we need approval of the claims and the payroll.
So we don't forget the WTH claim.
Okay. So sorry, can I interrupt for a second?
Of course.
We have, we have a claim in here for, it's 911. And it's for WTH for, I'm thinking of the... Oh, it's for the mapping for 911. And there is not enough money in that appropriation. So I would ask that you not approve that until after that gets, that gets fixed. We also have, we also have another appropriation there that is overspent. So I really, I don't want to be left on the hook for a spending from appropriations and exclude that.
The claim's with the exception of the WTH claim.
I, that's what I would suggest.
See, that's my motion. So if we don't pay it, approve it, the exception of the WTH and the other, other claim that you mentioned.
Second.
Is there another, is there another claim that needs exception?
It was paid in May. And with the idea at the time it was paid that we were going to be getting a transfer or something on it, and that has never happened. So that one's overspent.
So there's nothing we can do about that now?
It needs to be. I want to, I really want to correct it soon, so...
But there's nothing we can do here on this?
No, nothing you can do here on this.
So we have a motion to approve the claims and payroll with the exception of a WTH claim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. That's the last, the items on the agenda. Again, is there any patients' concerns? Anybody want to address commissioners? If not, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Ben, move in second. This meeting be adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.